Good evening, I will call the City Caucus meeting to order for Monday, April 8th, 2019. And we have one item for final consideration, if the Deputy Clerk can read item number one, please.
Item number one for final consideration, an ordinance amending the administrative code of the City of Schenectady to set taxi rates by resolution.
And those discussing committee with objection and consent, we have sixteen additional items for original consideration, if the Deputy Clerk can read item number two, please.
Item number two for original consideration, a resolution setting fees charged by taxicabs.
Discussing committee with objection and consent, item number three.
Item number three for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a SAM grant for improvements to Vale Park.
Also discussing committee without objection and consent, item number four.
A resolution to state legislators and the governors in support of A-00306 related to fees charged for the issuance of birth and death records.
Also discussing committee with objection and consent, item number five.
Item number five for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the transfer of properties to Sura.
Discussing committee with objection and consent, item number six.
Item number six for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 343 Germania Avenue.
Also discussing committee with objection and consent, item number seven.
Item number seven for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 115-117 Duane Avenue.
Discussing committee with objection and consent, item number eight.
Item number eight for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1821 Broadway.
Discussing committee with objection and consent, item number nine.
Item number nine for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1719 Albany Street.
Discussing committee with objection and consent, item number ten.
Item number ten for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1218 Webster Street.
Discussing committee with objection and consent, item number eleven.
Item number eleven for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 219 Linden Street.
Discussing committee with objection and consent, item number twelve.
Item number twelve for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 837 Grant Avenue.
Discussing committee with objection and consent, item number thirteen.
Item number thirteen for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 34 Steuben Street.
Discussing committee with objection and consent, item number fourteen.
Item number fourteen for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a property claim by Harris.
Discussing committee with objection and consent, item number fifteen.
Item number fifteen for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a property claim by Daring.
Discussing committee with objection and consent, and agenda item number sixteen will be taken out of order, presented by Councilmember Riggi, Deputy Clerk can read.
Item number sixteen for original consideration, a resolution recognizing crime victims month.
Thank you, and item number seventeen is for original consideration, if the Deputy Clerk can read.
Item number seventeen for original consideration, a resolution supporting the changes, change of the Rivers Casino OTB branch location to special demonstration project.
I need a motion to move this to the consent agenda, Ms. Perazzo, second by Mr. Miltavaren, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, as moved. Item number seventeen A needs to be added this evening by unanimous consent, if the Deputy Clerk can read, please.
Item seventeen A for unanimous consent, an ordinance approving the continuation of current bond anticipation note bands for an additional year and the issuance of certain bonds and bands.
Need a motion, please, Ms. Karen Zeluski-Walzunas, second by Mr. Miltavaren, is there any discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, now I need a request of motion to add this to the consent agenda, motion by Ms. Zeluski-Walzunas, second by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and that is moved. If there's nothing more to come before the City Council Caucus, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn, Ms. Porterfield, Ms. Karen Zeluski-Walzunas, all in favor say aye, and we are adjourned. And if I can call the City Council meeting to order for Monday, April 8th, 2019, and I'd like to call Pastor Carsonson for the verification, and Councilmember Perazzo to lead us in the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather here today, grant us the means by which we gain knowledge, the wisdom to use it well, the tenacity and dedication to follow through on decisions made, and compassion for the people of this city that we love. Be with the people of this city, be with the leadership that makes decisions in its best interest, and be with us today, give us a mood of civility and of respect, as we seek to make the best decisions for the city that we love. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Apologize for the feedbacks here, we don't know what's going on here. All right, let's try to continue then. If I can ask the Deputy Clerk to complete the roll, please.
Mr. Palamini.
Here.
Ms. Porterfield.
Here.
Ms. Zeluski-Walzunas.
Here.
Ms. Perazzo.
Present.
Mr. Riggi.
Here.
Mr. Miltavaren.
Present.
Mr. Kozier.
Here. And we do have one out of order resolution this evening, it's a resolution recognizing
This is a resolution recognize April 7th through the 13th, 2019, as National Crime Victims' Rights Week in the City of Schenectady. Mr. Chairman?
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Whereas millions of Americans become victims of crime each year, affecting both individuals and their communities, and whereas the millions of survivors of crimes and their families are no less deserving of justice, rights, resources, restoration, and rehabilitation than the violent offenders who victimize them, and whereas Americans recognize that we make our homes, neighborhoods, and communities safer and stronger by serving victims of crime and ensuring justice for all, and whereas crime victims play an indispensable role in bringing offenders to justice, and whereas in the United States Department of Justice, the Office of Victims in Crime, OVC, was established to enhance the capacity to assist crime victims, promote justice, and healing for all victims of crimes, and whereas for many years, the OVC has helped lead communities throughout this nation in its observance of National Crime Victims Rights Week, and whereas the theme for this year's National Crime Victims Rights Week is honoring our past, creating hope for the future. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and the City Council do hereby pause on their deliberations to declare the week of April 7th through 13th, 2019, as National Crime Victims Rights Week in the City of Schenectady, and reaffirm the city's dedication to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our community and our victim responders, and working for justice for all victims and survivors. Mr. Chairman, I move this.
Mr. Riggi, second by Ms. Perazzo, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Tina, say some words about your upcoming event on Wednesday.
Sure, but first I want to thank you, City Council Mayor, you know, I've been doing this now twenty-two years, and I have every single one of the proclamations that the City of Schenectady and the Mayor's office has given us. You have supported us all these years, and we really appreciate it, and the families do as well. Our event is Wednesday, April 10th, at noon, in Schenectady Central Park. Yes, she just got here, so Martha, we have Martha and Lynn from our Parents of Murdered Children and Other Survivors group. We kicked off yesterday in Boston Spa, every day there's a county that's honoring the victims of violence or crime victims in homicides, and here in Schenectady, as I said, it's going to be Wednesday, April 10th, at noon, in the Rose Garden, it may be in the Pavilion, depending on the weather and the grounds, but we would like to see everybody there if they can make it, and support the families, but we understand if you have busy schedules, because we know you always support us, so thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, and if I can ask for the approval of minutes for March 25th, 2019, Ms. Karen Zeluski-Walzunas, second by Mr. Riggi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and I've asked the Deputy Clerk to read any communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, 8th, April 2019. Official, from the Mayor, a list of appointments dated April 8th, 2019, under general, there were none. Petitions, from the residents of DeCamp Avenue, a petition of twenty-four signatures for the sidewalk replacement program. From Mount Olivet Missionary Baptist Church, a petition of one hundred and thirty-nine signatures, requesting City Council reject the application for a wine and liquor store at 844 Albany Street, and alter zoning in the future to prohibit such stores in redeveloping areas. From Bethel AME Church, a petition of nineteen signatures opposing a wine and liquor store at 844 Albany Street, and asking for zoning regulations that would prevent such establishments in positive development neighborhoods. From the Community Builders, several petitions totaling fifty-four signatures opposing a wine and liquor store at 844 Albany Street, and from the Electric City Barn, a petition of seven signatures opposing a wine and liquor store at 844 Albany Street.
Thank you. If I can call on my colleagues to provide any committee reports, any committee reports from my councilmembers? Nope, seeing none, we'll move on to the privilege of the floor, related to the legislative agenda, I have three individuals sign up, first is Joy Hall.
I'm Joy Hall, Schenectady. We've got a big problem in Schenectady here. These speeders are speeding, hopping down Mallard Street, they turning when the arrow's not on, and we've got a lot of potholes down by Bull Ride Bowl, over across the street, Albany Street, Hewlett Street. Somebody's tire's gonna come off, I've heard plenty of complaints about people, I've got told, somebody told me, about people almost tire got taken off their car. It's gotta stop, we've gotta do something now, we can't let it go. So, something's gotta be done before long, because Hewlett Street is just as bad, I know, and we've gotta stop these speeders from going up and down the streets, and turning on when the arrow's not on, it's gotta stop, somebody's gonna get hurt, because somebody almost got hurt the last time on Mallard Street. It's got to stop now.
Thank you. Chuck Thorne, please. Please state a three-minute time limit. I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name's Chuck Thorne, I'm the City Clerk in Schenectady, I'd like to speak on Agenda Item Number Four. In January of this year, Assemblymember Phil Steck introduced into the Assembly a bill that would allow the City of Schenectady to raise the fees that they, we charge for birth and death certificates to match the State of New York. On January 9th, that bill passed out of the Health Committee with a vote of twenty-four to one, and it's been referred to Ways and Means. The last time that the cities and towns in New York State were allowed to raise their fees was 1991, close to thirty years ago. In 2003, New York State raised the fee that they charge for vital records to thirty dollars, but still froze the fee that municipalities are allowed to charge. Two years ago, with the establishment of the electronic death record system, the State of New York began charging, actually it was three years ago, they began charging the funeral directors ten dollars per death certificate to pay for the electronic system. The cities and towns get nothing from that. There are minimum computer and network requirements to run that system, so a lot of the towns and cities had added expense, and again, they get nothing from that, from that ten dollars, the state keeps it all. When Governor Cuomo and the Legislature placed a two percent cap on property taxes, there was the promise of relief from unfunded mandates, there's been none. The maintenance of these records is a mandate by the state to the towns and the municipalities, and again, we're getting nothing to help on that. So I would ask the Council to pass the legislation that's in front of you, which is a resolution to our state legislatures endorsing the, allowing the City of Schenectady to raise their fees. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
And I yield my thirty-four seconds to another member.
There you go. Thanks again for speaking out.
Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm David Giacalone, I live in the Stockade. I briefly want to talk, well, not briefly, I want to use all three minutes, I want to talk about the OTB demonstration project. What I'm afraid is happening here is that the City Council and City Hall has, still has this notion that the casino is the partner of City Hall, rather than the people of Schenectady being the partner of City Hall, and it seems to me that every time something comes to you, and it's something that the casino wants, there's no real analysis being done. And I'm wondering, on this particular thing, what was, were you told anything about the net effect of having more people going to the OTB? Are they people who would have been spending more money on something that has a forty-five percent tax on it, and they're moving it over to OTB where there's a much, much lower tax? Are they, are people actually, apparently you were told, if more people come to OTB, a lot of them will trickle out and spend more casino time. Well, has anybody surveyed the people who go there now? I don't see any of that happening, I see this, sort of this notion that if they, if the casino wants it, it's good, and I want to point out to you that, that just recently, the casino went and it asked the Legislature to reduce its slots revenue tax from forty-five percent below, to below forty. Well, that is a big cut in your revenue, in what's gonna come to the city and to the county. And, and yet, what they didn't tell us is, is the big boogeyman that they set up was MGM Springfield is there, they're taking all of our business because they paid only twenty-five percent. Well, what they didn't tell you is that they knew MGM Springfield was gonna be there, they had their license before Rivers had their license, and when Rivers applied for its license, it thought there were gonna be two casinos in West River, Massachusetts, not just one. But far more important than that, they didn't tell you that every single year MGM has agreed to pay twenty-five million dollars to Springfield as part of its host community agreement, and that during construction, it paid an extra fifteen million for community development, training police, et cetera, et cetera, which is to say, the State of Massachusetts set their tax at twenty-five percent because it expected every casino to have a host committee agreement that would cost far more for the casino toward the city. So the reality is MGM is attracting people from here, not because they have some really terrible advantage, except for the advantage that they spent nine hundred and sixty million dollars for a true tourist destination, and we didn't require Rivers Casino to build anything but a homey little thing that nobody particularly wants to take a bus to, so thank you.
Very good, thank you, sir. All right, I have nobody else signed up, Ms. McLean, did you want to talk about the legislative agenda? I know you came in late.
Yes.
Come. I'll put you on the list, I like joining.
The councilman said that he does not hold a four-year college degree, neither do six other Schenectady city officials. If an employee holds a law degree, and his boss is a graduate of a two-year community college education, there are bound to be clashes, and the community comes up short. When a double-dipper walks away from a hundred and thirty thousand dollar salary, there's something wrong somewhere. On another note, there were two items on tonight's agenda that had relevance to issue, issues I raised at this podium in the past. One dealt with taxi rates, and the other was fee increases for vital records. In the case of taxi rates, the law says it is unlawful to run a cab without a taxi meter. Meters give an accurate reading of a passenger's fare, so do time clocks. Several years ago, a friend begged me to come here and ask Council to install time clocks in City Hall for city employees to clock out. I did it for her, she obviously witnessed something that had disturbed her very much. Other workplaces have them. If it is compulsory for taxicabs to have meters, why not in the public sector? What is the reason for the lack of time clocks for city employees? As for increased fees, the argument was made that those who use the service pay for it. That argument can also be made for residency. Last year, the press reported that ninety percent of school personnel do not live in the city, however, they use the city facilities while they are at work. My street is covered with cars all day long, with the snow and the cars on the street, I had a hard time getting out of my driveway this winter. This year, the school is going to add thirty new teachers to the staff. I think this Council needs to make its pitch to school personnel to hire teachers who are willing to live in Schenectady. They will make a tax contribution to the City Coffers and pay for the service that they use. It's a win-win situation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, again, I have nobody else signed up for the legislative agenda, so I will call that closed, and I need a approval of the legislative consent agenda, please. Ms. Karen Zeluski-Walzunas, second by John Miltavaren, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and I will call on privilege of the floor regarding general city business, I didn't forget about you, Mr. Demasi, you are up right now, my friend, come.
I'm here tonight to talk about the city sidewalks. I know you're determined as a group to have good quality sidewalks in Schenectady, and I know the sidewalks will cost the residents a lot of money, so I think as, you as well as I, would like to see good quality sidewalks. So I want to bring to your attention, throughout the city, one perfect example, they're like this, not always it's bad, but right, the old Y, where they redid the sidewalks last year, if you go by, you'll notice the sidewalks are already after one winter, chipping and flaking away. Now, I live in the city, I take my bicycle, I walk, and this is not uncommon. So what's happening, to me, the contractors must be doing a cheaper mix, so either the ordinance or the standards have been mowed, or you need somebody from code enforcement there to make sure they're not playing around with the mix, because you don't want to put in a sidewalk and it costs people a lot of money, and one year later, they're gonna be worse than the old ones they had. Sidewalks are like, they should last forever. Look at the bridges, the quality. You could throw the whole dump truck of rocks all down, and they'll, you know, make it through the winter. Who care if people sprinkle something, or just anything, they just, if it's just the ice, the quality is very poor, and I think that's something going forward, anybody's doing sidewalks, especially downtown, you know, with so much money being invested, that should be checked, because I don't want to sound just being, but, I don't know how to put it, but the city's putting an emphasis on being a smart city, so people are gonna look at everything you do, and they'll know you're a smart city by the work you do, and the people doing the sidewalks now, they're just, they're just getting away with murder, and it's just a bad reflection on everybody. Thank you for your time.
Very good, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Patricia Smith, please.
Mr. President, Mayor, Council, Pat Smith from Mount Pleasant neighborhood Association. I've been asked to speak tonight for staff, school bus monitors, drivers, and parents of Hamilton School. We have an issue that, it's a safety issue that really needs to be taken care of. The school's on Webster between Seventh and Sixth. When the buses are parked there, and they, they're picking up or dropping off, they do block the sidewalk. Unfortunately, it's a narrow street, people, residents on the other side, have the right to be parking on their side of the street. It now becomes a very narrow lane. What happens is, that cars coming in from Seventh or Sixth, it's a who's gonna back out, because there is not enough room to get two cars through, it's a one-car situation. During the winter, the snowbanks are high enough that when they come around the corner, they can't see any other cars are coming. During the summer, with people parking, I was there the other day, it's very hard to see the cars coming, and also the children. What we're asking for is a very simple situation, solution. We're asking that for one hour in the morning and one hour in the afternoon, on school days during the school year only, that that be made a one-way from Seventh to Sixth. This would allow for the buses and the parents all to be in one direction, there won't be any more cars, we've had a lot of sideswiping, from what I understand, and this would only be for one hour in the morning and afternoon, that is it. It's done for churches, a lot of money was spent for the middle school to get the buses off the, off the street, the only thing we're asking for is a couple of signs, and maybe a patrol officer for the first week to make sure that it goes smoothly. I think this is a very important situation, the fender benders are one thing, children don't heal as well as car fenders, and after what I saw, there is good potential for something serious to happen. So I'm just asking if that could be done, and it could be done before the end of April, so that it's still, isn't still this year, and be a permanent situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm P.D. Vorus, and I still live in the city. I want to address the program that they held this week in the Stockade regarding the study to be done there by FEMA, and it's going to cost, I think, seven hundred thousand dollars, somewhere in that neighborhood. If FEMA does that, don't act like we are being charged for, remedication study on that area and the wall were put in, in nineteen fifty-two, and nothing has changed the situation. These houses that they're talking about mostly are not historic houses, but they happen to live in the district, and if FEMA is willing to spend that kind of our money to do this study, and not include us, Joe McCarthy was right, that's another McCarthy, he was right, he got it right. He got it right. Mary McCarthy was around with her group at that time. I grew up with that in my youth. And then, but there's Charlie McCarthy, and really, he's the one that's got it all. He knows what's happening around here. I received a notice today. I walked in on a group from Habitat for Humanity. They are, on April twenty-fifth, they are going to hold a meeting at a church hall. And the meeting regards challenges of substandard housing and poverty, a presentation with community leaders regarding local initiatives addressing these issues. And to get into this, it's going to cost twenty-five dollars, because they're having a meeting, a meal with it. I need to be long to be in there, not for the meal, not for anything they have to pass out. I don't know how it's going to impact the finances or in the budget around here, because the way I read this, most of the people that are getting in there will not be paying their way for the meal. So if I could just sit in there, it's being sponsored by my bank, and, but I, really, this is stupidity, absolute stupidity. I want to quote the Wall Street Journal, January fourteenth, addressing, I'll just read the quote from the Wall Street Journal, January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Free people working in a free economy have done more to save the planet than any other government program in the world in terms of reduction of carbon dioxide emissions. Blame teachers, college professors, celebrity entertainers, and activist media for the mess we're in. I know so many organizations today that a few years ago operated without vehicles. Today, they have vehicles. I'm leaving this for the clerk, please.
Thank you. Dave Giacalone, please.
Hello again, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I wanted to ask the mayor and the city council to spend some extra time in the next few months, finding out from the people of the Stockade, more of their reaction to the rather extreme options that were presented last week for the flood mitigation resilience. The people who did that study did a lot of work, and they came and they were very good at presenting things and very sincere about asking for input, but the reality is, an awful lot of people were very surprised at how extreme some of the options are. And I think you need to ask yourself, if the fact that FEMA has eight million dollars, eight and a half million dollars for us, is a good enough reason to dislocate the Stockade in so many ways, to change the Stockade in so many ways. What is the problem that needs all this money spent? And I think talking to individuals would help a lot. We were, we were asked to prioritize what we thought of five or six different alternatives. And the reality is, we weren't told how much they cost. We weren't told how much dislocation it would mean for the individuals involved, and we weren't told whether somebody said, that's my first priority on the map there. They didn't ask us to explain the priorities. We just put stickers. Did you put, did you want all those houses moved from Ingersoll because it doesn't affect you? And so you, so that's okay with you, that it happens there? Did you take, do a particular choice because it impacts the Stockade the least? We just, we don't know. And I think you need to sort of sit down and just hear from people before you hear from the experts again, and with them telling you, this is what we think the consensus is, because I saw nothing that could have led to a consensus that went on last week. And I don't know if you realize, but the least intrusive thing that they're suggesting is the ability of any homeowner to say, I want to elevate my property, any homeowner between Front Street and the river. So basically, a pop-up elevation. Anybody can say, middle of the block, wherever you are, I want FEMA to pay three hundred thousand or four hundred thousand or whatever to elevate my house. That is the least intrusive, and when you think about it, that could really break up a lot, well, hurt the ambiance, the fabric, the texture, the relationship between neighbors, and many other things. And so we need to be asking whether we can retrofit a lot of houses to avoid the flood damages that we're hoping. But really, you need to get some individuals to sit at a table and talk about these things. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Reverend Grisby, please.
Good evening. Mayor McCarthy, Council President Kocer, members of the council, I wanted to, I'm Reverend Phil Grisby. I direct the Schenectady Community Ministries, known for many years as Sickom, but now Schenectady Community Ministries, and also a city resident. I wanted to just share with you on behalf of the coalition involved with concerns about the proposed wine liquor store at eight forty-four Albany Street, which is the Hamilton Neighborhood Association, certainly us, other community members, community businesses, just a deep concern about that. We understand that where it is in the process, but we have been to the committee once, and we hope that there'll be another committee meeting soon about a proposal to change the zoning in the future. We have not yet heard about that, and certainly want to encourage you to move along on that. You've heard before you, there are about a couple hundred petitions, people have already signed on their way in. Here this evening, I have approximately another two hundred, which I will take to the clerk's office tomorrow. We also have a letter that just came in from the Boys and Girls Club, and there'll be some other letters coming in as well about this concern. We hope that, we know that you recognize it, but we hope that you could move along quickly in terms of looking at alternative zoning for that package, that, I mean, that package of property. So thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to hearing from you. I was also hinted on the way from the Neighborhood Association, there is a community cleanup day, which I don't know if you're going to be announced otherwise, but certainly this flyer is here, it's April twenty-seventh. I mean, I think that, certainly, we encourage all to take part in this. There are several other neighborhoods also on that day, I know. But, I mean, the concluding comment was, a way to help the cleanup will be to make sure we don't have a wine and liquor store at eight forty-four Albany Street. Thank you for your consideration.
Very good. Very good. I don't have anybody else signed up for the city business privilege of the floor, so I will declare that closed. And miscellaneous business, the council, please. Go ahead, Ms. Karen Zeluski-Walzunas.
Thank you. I did want to talk about the cleanup. The Woodlawn Park is going to have their cleanup day on April twenty-seventh, and they'll go from nine until probably twelve or one o'clock. They usually finish around that timeframe. But I also wanted to bring up that on May tenth and eleventh, those are the drop-off days for the Woodlawn garage sale. The tenth is from five to seven-thirty, and on the eleventh, it's from eight AM to noon. And then on the seventeenth is the garage sale. So hoping that everyone can get their spring cleaning done and get prepared to drop stuff off in May. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the council, please? Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you. So as we all know, there's this Thriving Neighborhoods challenge that's been going on, and many of the neighborhoods are doing it around cleanup. So as you've heard, there's already two cleanups on April twenty-seventh. Let me also add that the North Side is also having a cleanup day on April twenty-seventh from eight until two, early risers. So people can meet at Marty's Hardware, seventeen fifty-one Van Franken Avenue. Trash bags and gloves will be provided, and they have different locations, but you meet at Marty's, and then they would move throughout the community. Let me just expand, expand a little bit more on the Hamilton Hill. It's part of our, as we launch our Thriving Neighborhood Challenge, which is show love where you live, don't litter. We're asking community organizations, businesses, and churches to come out and to come in, to join in. We're also going to be painting fire hydrants that day, and we're going to give folks some food for all the hard work that they do when it's all said and done. So we really encourage people to come out, to participate, to just, let's begin to alleviate our city of a lot of the litter and trash. And I think this is a good way to do it, and also for people, neighbors, to get to know each other on all the various cleanups that are happening. So looking forward to starting that, and that day, we will also probably be, the Hamilton Hill will have our first installation of the new, well, the refurbished garbage cans that we're doing there. So we invite folks to come out on April twenty-seventh on, stop to all of them, spend a few, couple hours at one, move on to the next. So we just hope folks will come out and support those. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Nope, seen none. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator Schumer stopped in Schenectady today to advocate for additional or continued funding for the C program. You've built a very successful, President has a proposal that would make major cuts to the program and affect the ability to deliver services not only here in Schenectady, but other communities across New York State and throughout the country. So we were fortunate to be able to have him here, have him tour firsthand, meet the students that are part of the program, see the, really the impressive structure that they have in place under the leadership of Jennifer Lawrence. And as it's been pointed out before, Habitat for Humanity at the First Reform Church of Schenectady is sponsoring a symposium on April twenty-fifth, just talking about issues dealing with affordable housing and poverty. That if people want more information on that, they can contact my office or the Habitat office here on North Broadway. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Thank you, sir. And I just got a few announcements as well. Again, just remember, the SJTA summer job, summer youth job applications are out again, and they're available at our high schools and all our middle schools, at the main or the guidance office. The deadline is Friday, April nineteenth, so you still have a little time to get it together. But again, it's open to any youth residing in Schenectady County, ages fourteen to twenty-one. And I certainly encourage our youth to grab those applications and get them in before the nineteenth. This Sunday is our Coffee with the Council, once again, it's our second Sunday of the month, so we'll be located inside the Proctor's Arcade, again, in partnership with the Schenectady Green Market, and we're usually there from ten AM until about noon. So please stop by and say hello to us, any conversation or concerns you may have, and of course, grab a cup of coffee on us as well. Sidewalk petitions are still available, and the deadline again for that is May first. I'm glad to hear that DeCamp Avenue submitted their applications as well, their petitions. But again, I encourage folks who are interested in this process to stop at the clerk's office. Again, we do have a deadline of May first on that as well. So seeing no other business, ask for motion to adjourn. Mr. Multiverrin, second. Ms. Porterfield, in favor, say aye. And good evening.